Ten. Five.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, October 14th, 2020 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Our meeting this morning can be viewed live on KPTS Channel 8, also on the county's Facebook page and YouTube channel. We are, commissioners have plexiglass barriers again between them. Staff are socially distanced here in the room. We also have our masks. Commissioner Howell is joining us virtually here via Zoom. And then we are also, will be using the conference line if we need to as well this morning. During yesterday's staff meeting, commissioners learned more about the pandemic's impact on com care operations and services. And then we also learned about more testing opportunities for COVID-19 and our partnership with WSU. You can view that full meeting on YouTube, on Facebook, and on the county's website, sedgewickcounty.org. Moving along, tomorrow is Global Hand Washing Day. So everybody knows the Happy Birthday song, Happy Birthday to You, Happy Birthday to You. Well, if you sing that song twice while you're washing your hands, that's about the same amount of time that it takes to properly wash your hands, making sure that you scrub your palms, the back of your hands, in between your fingers, and underneath your fingernails. So just a very great reminder about hand washing and proper hand hygiene while we're all trying to stay safe from COVID-19. Also, as a reminder, this Saturday, any resident asymptomatic or symptomatic can call into United Ways 211 line to be scheduled for an appointment to be tested for COVID-19 at the health department's drive-through site. So we'll be testing residents all morning from nine to noon. And then, as a reminder, that's by appointment only, no walk-ins. So dial 211 to get your appointment set up. Early voting begins next week. So if you would like to vote in person, we highly encourage you to vote early. We also have our mega site at Interest Bank Arena for early voting. So if you'd like to go and vote early, we highly encourage you to go there and vote. And we also will have additional early voting locations posted. You can find that information at sedgewickcounty.org/vote. Mail ballots will be sent today from the election office. So if you've signed up to receive a ballot by mail, you should be on the lookout for that as we begin sending them today. Our team has also created a small, short video about how to properly vote by mail and return that. So let me play that for you this morning.
The general election is quickly approaching, and here are some tips to fill out your advanced ballot correctly. Step one, fill out your ballot marking your selections for the candidates or answers of your choice. The ballot can be filled out with either a pen or pencil. Anything that will bleed through, though, like Sharpies, are not recommended. Step two, place your completed ballot in the return ballot envelope. Step three, be sure to follow the instructions on the outer envelope. A mistake can cause your ballot not to be counted. For the ballot to be counted, there must be either the voter's signature in Section 1 or the assistant's signature in Section 3. To fill it out correctly in Section 1, the voter must sign or attempt to sign the signature line. Section 2 is to be filled out if someone is delivering the ballot on behalf of the voter, or if they assisted the voter in marking the ballot. Section 3 is to be signed by the person who assisted the voter, if the voter is physically unable to sign the envelope. When the ballot is completed, there are four ways to return it to the election office. You can return it by mail. The correct postage is 55 cents, which is equal to one first-class stamp. Deliver it in person to the election office, which is on the ground floor of the historic courthouse at 510 North Main, Suite 101. You can take it to any polling location. There will be a secure drop box at each polling site that states it is for mail ballots. Or you can place it in one of the 14 mail ballot drop boxes installed throughout Sedgwick County. Information on ballot drop box locations and polling locations can be found at www.sedgewickcounty.org/vote. To get updates on where the election office is in processing your mail-in ballot, go to myvoteinfo.voteks.org. There you can find out, has your advanced mail ballot application been processed, when your mail ballot was mailed to you, and confirm that your returned mail ballot has been received by the elections office.
All right. So again, a reminder for more election information, sedgewickcounty.org/vote is where you can find more information about elections and the, excuse me, the general election. Another reminder that if you do choose to vote in person, advocating for or against any candidate or ballot initiative on the November ballot is not allowed while at a polling place. All signs related to campaigns or candidates must also be at least 250 feet away from all polling location entrances. So we'd like to encourage everyone to be very courteous and professional while they choose to vote in person as well. On the agenda this morning, commissioners, we have meeting minutes, an appointment and a resignation for advisory boards. Commissioners will set a hearing date for a post-annexation hearing. Then we have our cares discussion, bid board, and then there's a fire meeting as well. So Chairman, I will hand the meeting over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. And good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, October 14th Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners Meeting. You'll notice Kate mentioned it earlier, but Commissioner Howell is joining us by Zoom. Hello, Commissioner Howell. Hope you're feeling okay. And
Thank you, Chairman.
And also during the morning, Commissioner David Dennis represents Sedgwick County at the state, there's a state convention of counties going on today. And there'll be requirement for a few votes. And so Commissioner Dennis will be in and out of this seat and over to his office to partake where it's required. So there'll be a little bit of a change. So you'll see that. But everything is in place. We've got a few important decisions we need to make today. And so with that, we'll call the meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
And vacation. To be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
We received some public comment, but we also have some people signed up for their attention today to address us publicly. So we'll move into the, into that section. We're ready for the first person. Melissa Ortiz is on, Ortiz is on our, the list. Good morning, Melissa. Welcome to the commission meeting. You have five minutes to
Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
Good to actually see you in person. All right. So I guess you all know why I'm here, right? Because we're going to talk about this mask mandate and these businesses again. So today, we begin my getting, sorry, I'm a little nervous. My beginning statement, oh, by the way, I'm Melissa Ortiz. I want to mention BC's Bar and Grill. They are friends of mine. They're affected by these business closings and keeping them shut down till midnight. They're a small business. They, they work very hard to keep it open. They have just very few employees. They don't get very busy. Their day crowd is 35 and older. These people, they, let me see here, they, I'm so nervous. Anyways, they have, they, they keep a decent business. I mean, like they, like I said, they do like 35 and older. Not, it doesn't get very busy, even during the weeknights, they're not busy. You know, staying open till 2:00 in the morning would help them, even with, by a couple of customers. And so it's just kind of unfair to them that because of Old Town and those other places that you guys had basically shut them down for. I mean, they're affected. All their employees, everybody's been affected by this, with these mask mandates and these closures. So I just wanted to come up with this because I happened to see this article, and I saw one last night, also on KSN, that had something to do with Commissioner Dennis and Dr. Menz talking about possibly maybe extending this curfew. We'll see what happens. Well, this is going on right now, and I thought I would read this issue with the Sandbar. I don't know if you guys heard about this Sandbar owner, Kansas Justice Institute. This is a, they're doing a lawsuit right now. It's in Lawrence, Kansas. Excuse me, I don't have any reading glasses today. A curfew forcing the Sandbar and other bars to stop serving alcohol at 11:00 PM due to COVID restrictions is a violation of constitutional rights, a lawsuit claims. According to a press release from the Kansas Justice Institute, a Lawrence Douglas County local health officer updated an emergency order requiring restaurants and bars to stop serving alcohol at 11:00 PM to close their doors at midnight regardless of the establishment's existing COVID mitigation procedures and protocols. The owner of an iconic Lawrence Tavern, the Sandbar, Peach Mattle, is represented by KJI, is in her lawsuit against the Lawrence Douglas County Health Officer for non-monetary relief. KJI, which, like the cenotile, is owned by Kansas Policy Institute, claims in the lawsuit order disregards constitutional rights such as due process and equal protection. Business owners should be afforded a due process hearing when an unelected, politically unaccountable health officer issues an order impacting their businesses. Kansas Justice Institute, Kansas Justice Institute Litigation Director Samuel McRoberts, Anna said in a release, it's a matter of fairness. There's no mechanism to challenge the restaurant and bar curfew order, and that should change. The latest health order prohibits a bar from utilizing outdoor seating after midnight, but permits certain indoor restaurants to remain open. According to the release, KJI claims restaurant and bar owners in Douglas County are being denied their civil liberties, including the right to earn a living and operate a commercial enterprise with due process of law. The Lawrence Douglas Health Department has said businesses in violation of the health order may be closed, and individuals may be subject to a Class A misdemeanor, which could result in a fine up to $2,500 and one year in jail. Mattle, the Sandbar owner, said this is about the survival of a business that has operated in Lawrence for more than 30 years. We have taken so many measures to prepare a safe social space, Mattle said in a release. We all want the same thing, happy and healthy customers. But if we aren't permitted to have normal hours soon, we might not ever get the chance to be a part of team of Lawrence again, which is also happening with our local small bar businesses, too. This is not the first challenge. Multiple COVID-related health orders have been challenged in courts around the country dealing with the arbitrary nature of the orders, the process by which they're issued, and the lack of constitutional rights to due process on behalf of those impacted. So basically, Kansas Justice Institute sued in federal court citing Fourth Amendment violations when Lynn County issued an order requiring, among other things, that businesses maintain the following information on each in-store customer, which includes customer name, phone number, yada, yada, yada. I think you all get the point here. The lawsuit was dismissed after Lynn County rescinded the order. This case is about Lynn County understanding the constitutional rights cannot be ignored.
Melissa, excuse me.
Yes, thank you. Anyways, I just want to say that
And I, and I appreciate you sharing that, that, but we all received that, that same article, I think.
But we've just got to let this, I mean, just, come on, let them get their businesses back home. And this is just really getting to the point. It's just out of control. I mean, they didn't do this, okay? These small bar businesses, this is very unfair to them. This is just draconian measures. You all know about how that we are feeling about this right now. And Commissioner Howell, I just want to say prayers for you, that you get better soon. We are all fighting for you. And thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell, for your kindness and what you've done for Hazsville community and our district, and how you've been on top about things with the signs and all. So, thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, I believe, is Michael Eckerman.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
You have five minutes to address the commission.
Thank you. I don't want to come up here today to talk about masks too much. I think we all, everyone that shows up here has the same opinion on that. I'm very proud to be here. I want to say that. It's just a wonderful time to be an American right now. You know, we have an opportunity as Americans now to fight for something that we believe in. And I think we've taken that for granted a long time, especially my generation. I'm 36 years old. I have three children. Been married to my wife since high school. So we've been together since we were 16. I believe in setting examples for our children. So that's where I want to start today is with our kids. What, what is going on with our children? I have a five-year-old, a seven-year-old, and a 12-year-old. Amazing children. And now we force kindergarteners to wear a mask all day. So I believe that's taking away from education. I believe the teachers are sitting there all day telling our kids to wear a mask instead of teaching them how to spell, read, write, have fun, interact with each other. And I want to make this very personal because, you know, everyone's going to come in here and say similar things. Listen, my son's 12 years old. I'm his dad. I'm passionate. He got suspended from the bus in the Goddard District for three days this week because he was trying to have a conversation with someone without a mask on the bus. I don't know where we're living anymore. And I'm very sad that that's going on. But I'm proud of my son. He stood up for something he believed in. He wanted to have a conversation with a friend. And you know what? I'm going to get him to school, and I did this morning. Then I went to work, and then I came over here to speak with you guys. So we need to start there. I think the, the children are going to be okay. I know we worry about the teachers, and I do, too. But I think limiting what students can do, say, how they eat, they can't drink out of water fountains, it's unacceptable to me. Completely unacceptable as an American citizen. Number two, I would like to speak personally about the elderly and the homes. We had to pull my 90-year-old grandpa out of a home when they forced him to move to another location because he was deteriorating rapidly, and he will pass away soon. And he's my hero. He raised me. My grandparents were my parents. So now my uncle and aunt have taken him in because, by God's grace, my aunt works in them homes and said, hey, if you don't get him out, he's going to die. He received, he had COVID-19, his whole wing did. But something about that older generation, they're tough. He's still with us. He's strong. He's getting stronger every day because he has family around him. Telling people that COVID-19 is deadly, I understand that. I understand we're living in a pandemic. I'm not arguing that. But telling elderly people they can't have a hug from their family is, is worse. We hear it all the time. The cure can't be worse than the virus. What we're doing to our children and the elderly is unacceptable. And I urge you guys, you're on the front line. You're voted-in officials. I'm just a terminal manager for a freight company that will continue to deliver freight. I love to do what I do. And I'll go back to work today and make sure everything flows in Wichita, Liberal, Topeka, Salina. I'll continue to make sure my drivers are safe, all our customers are safe. I love what I do. I love my drivers. We need to talk about the truck drivers. We need to talk about these people that are delivering packages, medical supplies, food. Those are things that matter, not a bar. I don't care if you shut down a bar. I do care about the business owners. But I think we should be talking about children, elderly people. Forcing these things on us is, is terrible. We talk about what's essential. Well, what's essential for me is being an American, teaching my children what's right and wrong, showing them how to treat a lady. Of course, my wife would handle that, too. But I will thank all of you, the government, the people that are lying to us every day, because you have made me a better man. We're not watching sports anymore. We're not watching Netflix anymore. I go to church more. And see, I made sure to go to confession before I came here because the Lord said, only those without sin cast a stone. I'm not trying to cast any stones, but I'm without sin today. That gives me faith. Okay? The Lord is with me. I hope he's with you. Mr. Howell, I hope you feel better, too. My wife watches you every week. She's a stay-at-home mother for six years, and she's passionate. And she wanted me to mention your name today, sir. The rest of you, I've seen you guys take a lot of stuff up here. So I wanted to be a little different today because I know it kind of, it just goes over and over and over. I believe in you. You're on the front line. You can make a difference in this community. Stop doing what you're doing to the kids. Let the elderly see their family. And for the love of God, say a prayer for America, because people like me will fight for it. It will happen. I appreciate the time. I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, sir. I don't see any questions. Thank you for addressing us. And best to your, your grandfather.
Thanks, sir.
Next up is Betty Scarborough. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning.
You have five minutes to address the commission.
All right. Thank you. How's everybody today?
Fine, thank you.
I, I wore my mask for the occasion. I normally don't wear my mask anywhere except for, I used to wear it to work because by profession, I'm a registered nurse. I used to love what I do, and until this year. I don't love it anymore because of the masks because I have my own physical issues with wearing the mask. And I'm not going to go over all of those with you. You can look up some of the research yourself and see what kind of issues people are having wearing the masks. I could go over some of the statistics about why the masks don't work. You've probably heard that before. I could go over all of the reasons why the mask mandates and lockdowns don't make sense and that they're unconstitutional. You've probably heard all of those before. The problem is, this situation is much like a story in the Bible. And it's the story of Moses. Do you remember the story of Moses? Do you know the story of Moses? Well, I won't tell you the whole story, but I'll just sum it up for you. In the story, God told Moses to go to Pharaoh and ask him to give the freedom back to the Jewish people. He went to Pharaoh 10 times, and each time Pharaoh said no. And each time, a terrible plague came on the Egyptian people, up to and including the death of each of the firstborn of the Egyptians after the 10th no. The way that this story compares to this situation here is that for a number of weeks now, numerous people have come before you leaders pleading their cases and their causes, pouring their hearts out to you and begging you to change, to be given their freedom back. And it has been turned on deaf ears each and every time. You leaders have said no. Even our president is begging that you give we, the people, our freedom back. I'm here to warn you of the coming judgments against you. I'm calling you to account that you have broken laws pertaining to falsifying information in order to carry out and carry on a hoax. The virus is not a hoax. I believe that the virus is real. But continuing to project the numbers, manipulate the numbers, and make the numbers seem worse than a average flu season is unlawful because you're putting fear in the people. 18 U.S. Code 1038 and 18 U.S. Code 1001 state that it's unlawful for government leaders to falsify information to the people with the intent of carrying on a hoax. And I want to remind you, I just said that the virus is not a hoax. That's not what I believe. The mask mandates are not right because they're not helping people. They're hurting people. CDC just came out with information that 70% of the people who are wearing masks are getting it. And there's only 3% that never wear masks that are getting it. We, the people, will hold you to account for your deeds to the fullest extent of the law. I'm here to represent we, the people, and direct you to cease and desist with your unlawful and unconstitutional freedom-robbing mandates today. Do I have time left? One minute?
One minute.
Okay. I just wanted to add with the statistics for Kansas deaths, and I'm sorry that anybody has died from the COVID. And for any other deaths, as a nurse, I'm very compassionate for people who are dying. I've been a hospice nurse before. Total number of deaths in, in Kansas is 799 for this whole season of the COVID. Since it started, for 2019 and 2020 flu and pneumonia season, the deaths was 1,539. For the 2018, 2019 flu and pneumonia season, it was 1,440. Both are nearly twice as many as what the COVID has done, but we haven't really heard those numbers before. I just want to repeat, I'm here to represent the people. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't see any questions. Don't see any questions, but thank you for addressing us.
Thank you very much. And, Mr., is it Howell? I'm, I'm praying for you, hoping that you get well. I heard about your illness last night, and I'm sorry that you're sick, okay?
Thank you very much.
I just want to mention, too, my mom and dad have both had it with very minimal symptoms. They're both near 80 years old. And the chances of recovery are higher than the chance of, chances of dying.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker is Lance Berland, and I believe he is on a, be calling in by phone, so.
Okay, Linda? Linda, is Lance on the line?
Yeah.
Okay, Linda?
No.
He's not on the line?
No, not yet. I'm wondering if he can't call in.
Okay. Okay, Chairman, we're having trouble with our phone lines, so it's possible that he's not able to call in. So we'll have to try and reach him some other way.
Okay. Well, why don't you try to reach him, and we'll, we'll proceed with the business. And then when he calls in, if you know you have him, then we'll, we'll recess to hear his comments.
Okay.
So, okay, with that, commissioners, we also received some emails. You know, we see, received public emails last night. You all had a copy of those. I make a motion that we receive and file unless anybody has any comments. Okay? Motion to receive and file those comments and, and the public agenda we had today. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2020.
Commissioners, you had a copy of the minutes. I had a chance to review them from September 23rd meeting. Any additions or corrections? And Commissioner Howell, I need to get my, my mind, but I, I'll look up at the screen to see if you're raising your hand or you want to say anything. Okay? Because I can't see your light.
Okay.
All right.
I'm fine.
All right. All right. So just feel free to comment in or butt in if I, if I missed you. So, okay, or interrupt, not, not be in. Okay. So that being said, there are motion to second for approval of the minutes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Who had?
I'm sorry?
Who had the motion in the second?
I, I made the motion, and I think Commissioner O'Donnell seconded. Any questions being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Lauren Clary from the Sedgwick County 3rd District Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Papun.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, Mike Papun, Assistant County Counselor. First appointment here actually is a resignation of Lauren Clary from First appointment here actually is a resignation of Lauren Clary from Commissioner Dennis's Third District Citizens Advisory Board. Ms. Clary had to resign from the board due to some conflicts with her scheduling and not being able to attend meetings. We'd ask that you accept her resignation.
Okay, that is, it's mine.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Dennis, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman, I appreciate it. First of all, I want to thank Lauren very much for her service. She was one of my very first appointees to the Citizens Advisory Board. She's done a great job. Unfortunately, she's not able to continue. So I want to make a motion that we accept the resignation of Lauren Clary and thank her very much for her service. And before I move on, I want to let you know they're getting ready to vote, so I'm going to be leaving the bench here momentarily.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'll second, it's been seconded by Commissioner Cruz. Any other comments? I'll just comment as well that Lauren Clary does a nice job, I'm sure, on your board, and she does a nice job in our community. So thank you, Lauren, for your service and your continued, we'll expect continued service as we go on. Motion in a second to accept the resignation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, resolution appointing Gage Woodard to the Sedgwick County Park Township Board in the treasurer position.
Mr. Papun?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. Item C is, have before you the appointment of Gage Woodard to be Park Township Board Treasurer. By state statute, when there's a vacancy in a township position, the county commission recommends and approves these replacements. Gage Woodard will be replacing Jean Woodard, who had to resign, I believe, in June. It's a recommendation of Commissioner Cruz that Gage Woodard be appointed. We prepared a resolution, would ask that you adopt the resolution, appoint Gage Woodard as the treasurer of Park Township.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mike. After a brief conversation with Gage, he has expressed interest in this position, and I'm thankful he has decided to step up to the plate. So today, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Gage Woodard to this park township board.
I'll second that. Any other questions?
Before we make this motion, though, it isn't going to be, since Commissioner Dennis is gone, I don't want Gage to think that someone voted against him, so.
No, it would be four oh, if Commissioner Dennis can't vote, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Been a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business. Item D, set hearing date for post-annexation hearing for City of Derby.
Mr. Wagner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. There's a map up on the screen right now that shows the area we're talking about. This involves an annexation of two different parcels and road right-of-way, of an annexation the City of Derby completed in 2017. The annexed parcels are in the green coloring. The total annexed area, including the road right-of-way, is outlined in red, and the City of Derby's city limits are in blue. This is just land just to the east of Rock Road and is along what's called Chet Smith Boulevard, I believe, in Derby and Eighty-seventh Street South pursuant to KSA 12531. Three years after the effective date of an annexation where a city was required to prepare a service plan, the Board of County Commissioners is tasked with holding a public hearing on that. During that public hearing, the board would hear evidence from the city and landowners concerning whether the services were extended by the city as described in the service plan that was approved three years ago. Then the board is tasked with making a finding regarding whether the services were provided. And if you would find the services were not provided during that hearing, the city and the landowners are notified the area can be de-annexed from the city if those services are not provided within the next one and a half years. The recommended action today, all that's being recommended is to set the public hearing for November eighteenth. If you do that, then our office, the county councilor's office, will mail out notice of hearing documents to the property owners in the City of Derby. I'd be happy to stand for any questions you might have on this.
Okay, I don't see any questions. Commissioner Howell, this is in your district. You have any comments?
Yes, I'd like to speak to this if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
I just want to say, this was a very interesting annexation, and Mr. Wagner can also comment on this if he would like, but this is a, there was a section of road that was not annexed. We made a partnership with the City of Derby and Rockford Township as well, came with Sedgwick County, and we together were able to find the money between the three different organizations to pave the mile section there on Eighty-seventh Street. But along with that was an agreement with the City of Derby that they would annex the road, and they went and annexed the little platted subdivision to the north. And that is still, again, is platted. I believe it's ready to be developed. I'm not sure exactly what's going on with that piece of property there, but I would just say this, Derby sets the bar very high. They do a great job with their annexation plan, and I think they're one of the best. In my six years as county commissioner, they are the ones that I believe set the bar very, very high on annexation plan, and they do a great job executing that, and they've done that here as well. So I would just say, I'm very proud of Derby for that, and I would be pleased to make a motion at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I don't see any other comments, so if you want to make the motion, now would be the time.
So right now, we're just going to be setting the public hearing, is that correct?
Commissioner Howell, that's correct.
All right, I would make a motion that we would set the public hearing for November the eighteenth, 2020, and authorize the county council's office to mail a notice of hearing to property owners in the City of Derby.
I'll second that. Motion in a second. Any other questions or comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager. We have multiple items on the CARES Agenda item today. Brent will talk about CARES Act, external funding programs, status. He will ask for a vote on an approval for some expenditures that he will get into. That'll be the first thing he talks about. And then he has three items that will be receive and file. Mike Fessinger will follow up with a contract for approval, which will require a vote, and then Lindsay will follow up with her usual summary of expenditures, and I believe everything in her listing is receive and file. And I believe Tanya is going to talk about communications as well. Okay, under this, so, right. So Tanya will get up and talk about Elise also at Epic Center, which will require a vote, too. So she'll be last, and we'll go from there. So, Brent?
Okay, so, and again, respectful of, we may move the schedule around a little bit if Commissioner Dennis needs to depart.
Yes, it would be appropriate to have Commissioner Dennis for as many votes as we can get, and we can massage that, too. We'll do receive and file kinds of information and fill him in later if he has to leave.
So make sure Dennis will kind of follow your lead on this stuff.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, Brent, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner, County Commissioners. For the record, Brent Shelton, your deputy CFO. In keeping with the process that we've been using, I'm going to speak today about four of our external funding programs through the CARES Act. The first one, which is the one that's received the most activity recently, is our Public Health and Social Services bucket of eighteen million dollars. After you approved those expenditures of over seven million dollars last week, that began the process where grant agreements have been sent out to agencies. We've received a number of those back. That triggers the process where our internal auditors begin contact with these agencies to receive their supporting documentation so we can disburse funds. That process is underway, and as soon as those documents are back, then we can begin to do those check distributions. In addition to the comments that were made last week about a couple of the agencies that we have requested funding and that was approved last week, part of our process is a risk assessment on every applicant that we are making award recommendations and dispersing funds to. And that risk assessment looks at that agency's fiscal capacity, their ability to handle the grant. So part of this process, now the follow-up monitoring process that begins once these monies are distributed, is how we go about doing the follow-up monitoring. So that process is also being undertaken at this point in time, so everybody's going through it. Some agencies get a little tougher look because of the size of the agency versus the size of the award or something like that. So you'll be seeing, all of the, all of our applicants have received a risk assessment score, just helping us go through the process and make sure that things are done according to the guidance. The Financial Stimulus Review Team met yesterday. What we're going to request now is additional approval from the Board of County Commissioners. They approved a little over four point three million dollars yesterday in three specific award recommendations. It's on the spreadsheet that you've just been given. Those award recommendations, plus some PPE and disinfectant that were previously approved and need to be formally approved by the county commission this morning, will bring the total recommendations and the total funding awards to eleven million, seven hundred sixteen thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents for our public health and social service agencies.
Brent, can I ask, so the addition, the additional is those last three that were handed to us?
Correct.
In this, it's not in color, but the grayed-out area?
Right.
The final three? Okay, thank you, just clarifying.
And then that other column that's got PPE and disinfectant, those were previously approved by the stimulus review team. They're included in that total.
Okay.
So we just need formal BOCC approval today.
Okay. You can continue on.
Okay.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's fine. Lot of numbers, we want to make sure that we've got clarity. So the message, I think, at this point is that there's over six million dollars that's still available in this bucket, and we've opened the portal back up to public health and social service agencies to apply for additional funds if they're on the list and they find they've got additional expenses. Or if it's a new agency that hasn't applied yet, they can go to the portal at sedgwickcounty.org, make application for the public health and social services funding. One of the items that we're going to ask for approval for today is a three hundred six thousand, seven hundred fifty dollar award to the African American Council of Elders. That's for a marketing campaign that's directed at the African American community, which has been disproportionately affected by COVID-19. The council was previously awarded a little over two hundred fifty thousand dollars for some mental health support and food programs, and they have requested, and we've worked out an arrangement, because they're an all-volunteer group that don't have staff to do the bookkeeping, that once they procure services or goods, Sedgwick County will be used as paying, will pay those invoices on their behalf. So it's a little different arrangement than we worked out with the other organizations that have accounting or bookkeeping staff to take care of those processes. So for our public health and social service agencies today, I would request a motion to approve the additional recommended award of four million, five hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty cents, bringing our cumulative total to eleven million, seven hundred sixteen thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents, and then authorize Sedgwick County to finance, to pay invoices on behalf of the African American Council of Elders.
Okay. I don't see any questions. It's good stuff that you're providing. Thanks, again, to the committee for muddling through it. So I will make that motion to approve the eleven million, seven hundred sixteen thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents, including the African American Council item that you, that's included in there. And that's my motion.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? I don't see any, so must be a good report. I think we're getting used to it here, so.
Okay.
So I don't see other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, Brent, you're still up?
Okay.
So that was a vote, so you're getting to give us, what, three items of a status or something?
Three items, our safe operating grants, PPE kit distribution, and workforce development programs. Just to give you a brief status.
These will be receive and file?
These will be receive and file. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Our grant program, we've received over three hundred new applicants since, over the past week. Those are business and some nonprofit organizations. We're now up to about twelve hundred applications. We continue to process the grant agreements and processing checks. They're going out on Tuesdays and Thursdays in our normal check runs, and I would just implore folks that are making applications, that they complete applications, speaking to their expenses that need to be reimbursed and providing us with the documentation, will speed them through the process a lot faster. In terms of PPE kit distribution, I'm told that we've gone through about a thousand to twelve hundred kits at the arena. Don't have counts on our thirteen other locations, but those are going out. There's still some capacity. We've asked folks to go to the website at sedgwickcounty.org and reserve a kit. If a company doesn't do that, they can still show up at one of these locations and get a kit if it's available. We'll just log that information so that we have that demography at the end of the process to tell where the kits have been going, the businesses that received them, and so forth. And finally, on our workforce development, the three programs that we have approved there for about a one point nine million, those agreements have gone out. There've been some discussions, and those should be coming back momentarily so that we can then begin that documentation and funding process.
Okay.
So I would stand for questions.
Yeah, so that's good news on the, your first item about the applicants, since we back open the portal, and now we've, three hundred new applicants recently, but it's a total of twelve hundred?
Right.
And this is a five thousand dollar grants?
Correct.
Right. So, and again, I'll just reiterate, if people are watching, you need to, the more complete your application is that you're, that we receive, it's easier to get approved and funded, so.
That's right. Moves the process a lot faster.
Basically, answer the questions that are on the application.
Correct.
All right. Commissioner Cruz has a question?
Thank you. Can you just reiterate what the deadline is for those new apps?
I don't believe we've actually set a deadline. We've been doing these now on a first-come, first-served basis, so not knowing if we set a deadline and have to reopen it because we didn't get full capacity. So we're just filling them as fast as we can and trying to get caught up to those that are coming in. But when we see that we've got capacity, we can close that portal back down.
Don't we have to have this money spent by a certain time, though? Do you think that setting a deadline would be helpful to get people to fill this out, or is that not a strategy? We want to get people to fill it out?
We can certainly do that, Commissioner.
I mean, what's the drop-dead date for us to get this money out? I mean, that should at least be addressed.
Right. We will, by the end of November, at the latest, we'll need to know where we are on these. But if we start, if we approach capacity, then we can close the portal. I guess we tried it both ways. We've had it open first-come, first-served, and then we didn't know for sure where we were, so we put hard deadlines in, and those deadlines have come and gone, and we weren't quite at capacity. So we've extended it, and we're kind of watching it. We're learning as we go. So we're getting a little better at this, I hope, not that we ever want to have to do it again, but we're kind of watching it to assess when we are getting close to capacity and want to close it back down. So we'll just keep you apprised as we go through it.
Okay. And forgive me, I didn't catch when the Public Health and Social Services, you said we had eighteen million allotted in that bucket, and, excuse me if we just address this.
That's fine.
So where are we at with the other, you know, it looks like about six point three million dollars left? Are we opening that back up?
Right, that portal is open now.
Okay.
And we have about two hundred thousand dollars in pending awards and haven't been decided on by the committee up or down. up or down.
Okay, so that's two portals that are still open, the social services and the businesses. Are you going to address any other portals that are open, or are we done with?
With the PPE kit?
And the PPE kits. That's also open.
Okay. Okay, thank you, that's all my questions.
Okay. All right, I don't see any other questions. So I make a motion to receive and file those three reports. Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, to receive and file. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks again, Brent, for all your work. Extend our appreciation to the committee. Okay. All right, next up, Mike, welcome to the commission.
Mike Fessinger, Assistant County Counselor, here again with yet another agreement for your consideration. What you've been provided with before this meeting is a subrecipient agreement with WSU, in which the county agrees to reimburse WSU with CARES Act funds for the costs associated with setting up the molecular diagnostic laboratory, with the goal in mind of providing Wichita-based COVID-19 testing. Previously, as you know, this commission allocated $1.5 million to this endeavor in order to reimburse WSU for equipment associated with the lab. What this agreement does is it expands the scope of that. What this agreement does, after learning more about WSU's expenses, is allow for reimbursement of up to $4 million to get this lab up and running. So by approving this agreement and authorizing the chairman to sign, you also authorize that increased reimbursement threshold of $4 million. This agreement provides WSU with the flexibility that they need to obtain reimbursement for a number of different types of expenses that they've incurred while working to set this lab up, but it also vests with county the final determination of CARES Act eligibility for such expenses. So while we don't envision a lot of disagreement between the parties as we move forward, retaining that final say with the county is very good from an auditor's perspective, and should hopefully serve to protect us in the coming years as we face audits for this money. This agreement requires WSU to have either paid an expense or incurred an expense associated with the lab by October 30th, 2020, in order to receive reimbursement of CARES money from us. This is intentional, as it'll bring finality to this contract before CARES Act money will flow back to the federal government on December 30th, 2020, and will give us time to reallocate any unutilized funds, if any funds exist. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions on this. It's my recommendation that you approve this contract and authorize the chairman to sign.
Yeah, Mike, just a, this subrecipient agreement, I think we've seen, this is, looks to me like.
It's very similar.
Right, it's following the same attachment A and B, and all of the attachments seem to be kind of standard language that we've used in the past.
Standard language, but, but, but it's not identical. I mean, there are changes and differences in those.
In this case, WSU?
Right, right.
Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I get it that we're under a time crunch, and we had a holiday this week, but giving me an agreement that's 23 pages right before this meeting is kind of unacceptable in my mind, because it takes me a while to read this and to understand it. And I get it that it's very similar in nature to others, but I literally have had no time to read this.
Well, I, I understand that, Commissioner, and what I will tell you is that the delay in this was attributable to negotiations between myself and WSU, and we reached an agreement yesterday in the PM. This may be taken up at a later time, if you wish.
So how, how will this slow this process down if we don't do this right now? Like, could I have at least a day to read this?
I, in my opinion, yes, you can, although I'll defer to management or finance if they disagree with me.
So tell me how, how much this will delay and what the process is. I just don't like approving something that I've literally had no time to read.
Well, a couple of things, Commissioner. First of all, and we talked about this even last week, the volume of paperwork we're giving you as we flow through this is extreme. We try our best to get you information, and we're going to try as a staff to get you information on Monday before the Wednesday meeting, so you at least have a day or two to digest it. With Columbus Day this week, we were a little bit jammed up on that. There's two ways we can handle this WSU contract. We could defer till next week, if that's the will of the commission. Lindsay's at the podium. I don't think that that hurts anything, it just keeps us from starting the reimbursement process. Or we could also convene a special meeting tomorrow or Friday to take this one singular item and give you a chance to approve the contract at that time. So I see a couple of options there, and let me let Lindsay talk about anything she sees as a potential problem.
So Commissioners, Lindsay Povrussow, CFO, the challenge would be essentially that we are in a position now where we're also trying to work through the actual service agreement component, and that could go live as soon as October 26th. And one of the things that we have been advised by our consultants and our auditors is to try and make sure that we can account for whatever reimbursement costs are possible and whatever the billing price is that we will pay. And so it is, it feels fairly important to me to try and get this done, maybe not wait till next week, but maybe have a special meeting in a day or two, if possible, to give you time to read through and feel comfortable with what you see. But then also make sure that we're in a position not to delay that next service agreement to actually get that testing lab capacity up and running. That would be my primary concern.
Well, my primary concern is that I'm going to vote on something I haven't read.
Sure, totally understandable. And I think if, the reassurance I could give you, not that it's going to change your mind, but the reassurance I could give you is, we tried to make this substantially comport with the agreement that we have been talking about when they came and spoke, I think it was in July or August, and the terms are similar to what we have in everything else. It's the required federal terms. The scope of the work is what is pending right now in terms of eligibility analysis, and so I tried to emphasize that, that that is something that, we haven't actually said this is a hard and fast $4 million. It's still pending eligibility review, and so we'd still have to come back and give you updates on how this money is actually spent and allocated. This just gives us the mechanism to move forward. So certainly, I understand that would be the only thing I have to offer about why I felt like this was an acceptable way to bring this to you, knowing that you only got it last night, well, this morning, actually.
Yeah, like, right before the meeting?
Yes, yes, I apologize.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there's two parts to this agreement, and it appears to me, one is the agreement that Mr. Fessinger has provided us, and the second is, what are we going to get out of that agreement? And we don't know that right now. And I, I don't see how we can allocate $4 million when we don't know what we're getting for $4 million. You know, I, I see some general areas, but what kind of services? That's, that's the bottom line, is what services and how much is it going to cost us once we decide that we start using this? And until we've got both of those pieces of information together, it's hard for me to make a decision on something, especially one that's presented to me part, half of it today, and the other half not at all.
Well, yes, there is this agreement that provides for us reimbursing WSU for the setup of the laboratory, but I think then what you're referring to is the subsequent agreement we will enter into with WSU for the testing that they will provide to us. And that second contract is in progress and is being negotiated.
So how do I vote to give them $4 million when I don't know what I'm getting?
This, this agreement pertains only to the laboratory, and it's CARES money that's being used to set up the laboratory.
But the bottom line is, this money we're giving them is to get a service at the end. We're not just giving them $4 million and saying, "Have a happy day."
Well, that, that, that is one way to, to see it, but they are two separate agreements. So if you wish to see both at the same time, we can make that happen.
I can't see how they're two separate agreements. I, I understand you're developing two separate agreements, but there is one goal in mind at the end, and that's for us to get testing for the citizens in Sedgwick County at a cost that's reasonable. And you're giving me one piece of the story, but not giving me the answer that I need. I need to know, what are we going to get from, for the citizens in Sedgwick County at a cost that's reasonable? And I can't vote on this right now. If, if you force a vote on it, I have to vote no, because I can't, and I don't think that that's what I want to do.
I understand, Commissioner, and at this time, I cannot tell you what the price per test would be for the lab, for the county.
Thank you. Mike, thanks for all your work on this. I know this has been something that we've been working on for the last couple of months, and I understand the times of sensitivity with it, and I'm, I am very excited about this moving forward, and most importantly, having a lab in Sedgwick County so that we can get results turned around much quicker. I think that is one of the key frustrations people have with the coronavirus testing in Sedgwick County, is just that it takes a lot, a lot more time. And yesterday, in our staff meeting, we were talking about this, because this is a model many schools across the country are using, and then partnering with local health departments. And so I, you know, I just wanted to thank you for your work on that, all the folks at WSU.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. I, listening to the conversation, I respect Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Dennis's questions. I think we got to re, from my perspective, at the start, this was always about, this first phase was to buy the equipment, which is the lab, and it's, it's more of a capital purchase reimbursement. It, it doesn't go into the testing costs, the amount of tests. We were hoping that the state is going to step up to help fund testing, because our CARES money has, again, has to stay within Sedgwick County. So this would allow, that the testing is not finite yet, because hopefully WSU is going to be able to, with this testing lab, will be able to test residents outside of Sedgwick County, and, and even set up for, for future whatever viruses or whatever problems years out. So again, I, I'm looking at this as a hardware purchase. If we end up having to help fund testing the next round, or if the state does, or if the general public, if the price is X dollars per test, they can decide, and companies and everything else. So I think this is the first major step in getting a, in getting this approved. I know it's been very, very difficult. It's been delayed by, by multiple questioning and, but I have a lot of faith in the, in you, Mike, and the, and our attorneys, and actually in WSU's attorneys, to try to get to the finish line on the purchase of the lab and the setup cost of the lab. So with that, I'll make a motion that, to approve this subrecipient agreement as stated.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Cruz has a question?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, my, my main concern is, you know, this laboratory equipment, who, I just, I have a lot of, I have a lot of questions. I don't want to slow down the process, but I believe that this is an important decision.
Well, and I, I completely understand your perspective, and I, I think the, and respect what you're saying, I think that the disconnect is down to just what the, what the goal is of this agreement, which is just to ensure that the purchases that WSU is making and will make are properly reimbursable under CARES. But I, I take your and Commissioner Dennis's point that the process has been fast, and that there is not the second agreement yet that really is in concert with this one, which is that the testing that will, will occur ongoing. But what I can assure you, at least from a CARES Act perspective and from the county's liability perspective, that this agreement doesn't run afoul any, you know, federal laws or, or county purchasing practices, but I nevertheless understand your point and respect any decision you choose to make this morning.
Well, like, the equipment, you know, are they required to keep the equipment for a certain amount of time? You know, how, are they going to make money off of this equipment? Just tons of questions that I have that I haven't really been able to ask.
Sure.
And, you know, I feel like when I'm sitting to make a vote, I just don't feel comfortable. And so I, I don't necessarily want to vote against it, but I feel like I'm being forced to vote against or vote on something that I don't feel comfortable voting on. And I think as a person sitting in the seat making votes, I should feel comfortable about those votes. So I'd like to make a substitute motion that we tailor this for at least 24 hours. If we have to have a special meeting to come back to, to make this, to vote on this, then I think that's what we should do. But my vote would be, or my motion is to make a substitute motion that we tailor this, table this for 24 hours, or 48 hours, to have a special meeting to approve this contract.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. Commissioner Dennis?
I was going to make a substitute motion, but Commissioner Cruz has already made it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, so it takes, how long for you to read this agreement? How long to get your answers? 24 hours? I assume?
I would like at least 24 hours, yes.
I guess everybody, check your calendars, see if you're free 24 hours from now.
I am free 24 hours from now.
Asking everybody to check their calendar, please.
I have a appointment tomorrow morning.
Could we, 26 hours? 28 hours? Could we have it tomorrow afternoon?
No, no way. I can't do tomorrow afternoon.
What about Friday?
No. They, we can't delay this any longer. You guys need your questions answered, and, okay, is everybody free at 10:30 tomorrow morning?
No.
11 o'clock tomorrow morning?
I have a, I have a doctor's appointment at 11.
Okay.
I mean, if the substitute motion fails, you could vote on the original motion. Is that correct?
Correct. Noon? Is anybody, conflicts at noon?
I have a lunch appointment.
Okay.
Well, does it hurt to delay it until next meeting on Wednesday? Is there, is there a time crunch between now and next Wednesday?
We were just having a chat about that with staff here. To Commissioner Cruz's point, to get some time to read the contract, I agree, it could be a day. To get to where Commissioner Dennis wants to get, which is both of these contracts rolling simultaneously, is not going to happen by tomorrow, but could happen by next Wednesday. What, it's the will of the people here. We can, we will work quickly, as quick, I mean, we've been working as quickly as we could for the last month or two on this. There's a lot of, a lot of ins and outs of this discussion, but we could work quickly and potentially have both contracts ready by next Wednesday, if that's the preference of the people. Or we could vote, I'm a little bit with the chairman, we've kind of viewed this as two phases, the equipment first, the agreement for the testing, and what we, to your point, Commissioner Dennis, what we get out of the deal, second. So whatever the will of the commission is, we can defer it for 24 hours, we can defer it for a week. I don't know that it's going to stop the process. It could delay our ability to order, as Lindsay brought up, and with the potential of slowing up some testing by a couple of days. That's, that's up to the commission. We, we could work this through as quickly as possible.
Okay. Let's see, other comments? There's a motion and a second to delay. What is, what is the delay now? What, what is your timeframe on your motion? I don't know what it is. You said 24 to 48, and then you just said a week. So the people that made the motion, please clarify what you want to delay it to.
Well, I am comfortable making this within 24 hours, but it seems as though there are people that are unavailable within that timeframe. So without asking people to make themselves available, I mean, I'm willing to make myself available for this, because I believe it's important. I, I don't believe that it's, I, I don't feel comfortable voting on something that I haven't even read. And so I would ask, if anybody didn't feel comfortable voting on something, they were given five minutes before the meeting, I would hope that they would speak up in the future, and I would respect their decision.
Okay. So last week, we received a stack of subservient agreements like this, and we voted on them, and we did not delay them. And I don't even remember what they all were about. So it's not like... So it's not like we haven't meddled through agreements before to get to the finish line. And I guess at any time, any commissioner can ask for a draft or a status and find out where, because I'm sure it was just the fine tuning it at the end on stuff. So will we correct?
We can call the roll, and you can vote against it.
Okay. I just need to define then when you want it delayed till. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, I just asked the manager if it's going to harm waiting until the normal meeting a week from today. And the information that I received back from the manager, unless I misinterpreted, was that we can delay it until next Wednesday and take it up as a normal case. This is $4 million. We're going to make a decision on the spur of the moment on $4 million, and we don't have the entire story? It's difficult for me to do that. So I don't see a reason why we couldn't amend the motion and say that we bring it up at our next meeting, next Wednesday at a regular meeting. And we have all the information that's available so that we can make a wise decision on expenditure of $4 million. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So I will readdress this substitute motion to say I'd like to make a substitute motion, we delay this one week.
Now, second amended substitute motion.
Okay. Amendment motion and a second. A note for the record that about 30 minutes ago, we voted to approve $11 million worth of items with minimal detail other than amount, including a last minute addition of $4,70,000 to Ascension via Christie for whatever their approval was. And we don't know if they're making money or having tests or what it's for, but we didn't, I didn't review that, and I supported that just 30 minutes ago.
That was also vetted by a full group of people that was online.
I respectfully agree. So is that committee more valuable than the one that's working on this agreement? I mean, I just don't, I'm confused. But, all right, there's a motion, a second to delay this another week.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions if you don't mind.
Okay. Commissioner Al?
Yes. So Commissioner Dennis made a comment that staff is saying that there's no consequences by waiting a week. Can I have the manager or someone validate that? I'd like to know for sure there's no consequences for waiting to approve this agreement.
Commissioner, as Lindsay talked about when she was at the podium, the only potential consequence would be a couple of days of delay of ordering testing materials. And I'm not even 100% sure that that's, could be a consequence. That's something we'll have to talk to Wichita State about, but that would be the only potential consequence between waiting until next Wednesday.
I'll just, I'll just say, I'm on the fence a little bit here. I don't mind waiting for people to feel comfortable with the document. On one hand, I do trust our legal staff has done a good job. I've spent the last few minutes looking at this pretty closely. It's a lot of legal language. It seems like it's a boilerplate that's been tweaked a little bit for this specific use. But, you know, reading this is not hugely helpful to me. I'm ready to move forward, but I also don't mind the delay if that helps other commissioners come on board, support this as long as there's no consequences. So I'll support the, I'll support the motion as long as there's no consequence. But honestly, as long as Whit O'Brien has looked at this, our CFO has looked at this, our legals looked at this, and it accomplishes the mission, I'm ready to move forward. I can tell you, as a legislator in Topeka, there's been, there's been times I've had enormous amounts of material to pour through overnight, and I've done my very, very best. But at the end of the day, we do the best we can. The limit we've not had today is Mr. Fessinger really hasn't walked us through the, hasn't walked us through the agreement, you know, page by page or section by section, which I guess he could do to bring us on board, maybe bring us on board now. If there's, again, if there's no problem waiting, I guess I'll support the delay, but I'm ready to move forward if that, if that helps anybody. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Al. I don't see any other comments. Or Mike, you have something to respond to?
All I would say, if it would be helpful to the commission, I could discuss what the main controversy was that caused the delay and what the result of that discussion was, if it would be at all helpful to ease kind of your position on this. But otherwise, obviously, I have no issue from a legal standpoint if you were to delay this a week. It's fine with me.
I would like to, why don't you share with us what the gist?
Sure. The, the main point of disagreement was the October 30th date. There was some concern that incurring or paying costs by that date would not be feasible for WSU. However, we worked through that and received assurances and held fast to that position that October 30th needed to be the drop dead date for this agreement. And so that was, I think, one main cause for the delay. The other cause was really the final sentence of term number three here, which is that the county must retain final say on whether something is eligible for CARES Act expenditures or CARES Act reimbursement. So this agreement places a lot of control on the part of the county as we perform. And so that was really the long and short of it. Otherwise, Commissioner Cruz is correct that there are some general descriptions of different things that are reimbursable, but the backstop against that is the county makes the determination. After a request from WSU has been made for reimbursement, we determine whether that reimbursement will happen. So I understand that may not be all the information that's required, but I just wanted to explain the reason for the delay on this.
Okay. So I recall that at one time, they were going to, maybe she wanted to identify and just say any costs that were, be deemed to be not eligible, that they would identify and repay the county.
That was their position when we were not operating under a reimbursement model.
So then you've changed from that to the commission, or the county has the full authority to approve any of the expenses?
That's correct, although both entities will face an audit after all is said and done.
Right. Okay. That's helpful information. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the concerns for the delay, but I truly believe we need to move forward with this today. I trust that staff and WSU came up with the best legal basis as well as the way to move forward and get this testing done here in Sedgwick County as soon as possible. WSU's been working on this for months. I think, I think it's imperative that we don't delay, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't see.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more, I have one more question if you don't mind.
Okay. Yeah. Commissioner Al?
So I just want to just confirm that, I think I already know the answer. I'm pretty sure I already heard this. Let's just reiterate once again. Whit O'Brien has looked at this. I just wanted to say, they have blessed this document at this point or this agreement a week? Do we have their support at this point?
We do, Commissioner.
Okay. So what I did here is if we're going to delay ordering materials for a few days because of delaying our agreement, our approval of this agreement, I'm not happy with not ordering, not leaning forward to get this testing started as soon as possible. So I think I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell. We need to go ahead and go forward if possible today. If you guys want to meet later today or even in the morning, that'd be fine, but to wait a whole week, in my opinion, is not, is not what I prefer.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was just one final comment before we vote, because with the comments I've heard, it appears that the vote to defer is probably going to be defeated. I just want to remind the commission, and I've been on the commission now for almost four years, and I have not seen one instance where the commissioner asks for some little additional time that has not been granted. This is going to set a precedence. I hope each and every one of you remember that when you have something that you want deferred and it gets overturned, that we have never, ever denied a commissioner the ability to get additional information before that they voted on something. So as we vote, please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Okay. Commissioner Al?
Mr. Chairman, I would, again, I'm not, I don't mind a delay, but I don't want, I don't want there to be a consequence of pushing back our testing. So if we could meet later today or even in the morning or something, you know, so that the testing is not pushed off. I heard them say that their ordering materials may be pushed off a few days because of this delay. That is not acceptable. So I want to support Commissioner Dennis and Commissioner Cruz and give time to read this, but if we can do that and meet later today or even in the morning or sometime tomorrow so that that, that testing is not, you know, the scheduled ordering materials for testing is not impacted, I think that's a better plan. So I agree with Commissioner Dennis. I don't want to set a precedent of not ordering the, you know, needing a little bit more time, but I don't know that we need a whole week. That's really my point here.
So I've heard even later today, can we, can you go and get your answers done? And this agreement read by four o'clock this afternoon? Yes, or no? Can you get your answers? And can you read the document and do it by four, by four o'clock? We have a NCA.
If I had time to read it, I'm sure that I could. I think that that's a little quick. I guess one thing I just want to point out is there's a ribbon cutting for this laboratory already scheduled for next week. We received information on that this morning. So if this is a reimbursement, have they already ordered this stuff? So they've already ordered it. So really, this is just us reimbursing them. So to say that it's going to be delayed, how much is it going to be delayed if it's already been ordered?
There are some expenses that have not been incurred yet by WSU. They have up until October 30th to do that. But, you know, I can't speak for what WSU's conduct will be if we delay this, but I think that may be the fear. Do I have that correct, Lindsay?
Also, I think Lindsay's going to get the point. I just want to remind the commission that the decision to move forward with the reimbursement of this lab, and you all remember when Dr. Tomlin was actually here, this was six, eight weeks ago, that's the day that the commission said move forward and basically reimburse them for expenses to stand up this lab. That's when we started working on this. So that was why, I guess, we looked at this as a two-phase process. Number, phase one was let's get the lab stood up. Phase two was let's determine how many tests we can get and resolve a cost on that. And then in the middle of this stream came state CARES, state Spark money, which then began to say that they were going to acquire a large volume of tests from Wichita State. So we've had this three-way conversation going on, of which that still has not come to fruition. If that would come to fruition, then I'm not sure that we need a contract for testing from Sedgwick County CARES dollars. So we're kind of juggling a lot of balls here. But one thing that we were firm on was we had made the agreement, the commission had made the agreement six, eight weeks ago, let's reimburse Wichita State for the equipment that they're using to stand up this lab. I just want to remind you of that meeting that we had when Dr. Tomlin was here. I think that was a special meeting on a Friday where Mr. Schlapp were here to talk through this. So Lindsay, any?
The only thing I would follow up on is, yes, this is, this is the encapsulation of that. The reason we divided it into two is again at the auditor and the eligibility analysts, our consultants' suggestion, so that we would know exactly how much we were going to dedicate. Going concurrent with this process is a request for information to WSU for them to substantiate all of the expenses they've incurred so far, so we can start fleshing out which part of this $4 million is truly going to be reimbursed and which is not. And then the reason that our consultants recommended that is because that would then be a basis or a tool for us to use in negotiating the ongoing testing price for use with WSU. And Tom did just reference that State Spark has allocated $50 million total for statewide COVID testing. We don't quite know exactly how that's going to look. It may look a little different than what we have traditionally been doing. We have already put in some orders for supplies with WSU to do some testing for us. So my understanding is we still would need to cover those costs. So we will probably need to have some form of agreement to cover that portion, if not an ongoing type of analysis that may be different what the state is ordering. Everything's moving quickly. The governor just came out at four o'clock yesterday and announced a COVID testing strategy. So I do apologize for how this works. We are trying to do the best we can as quickly as we can to try and get COVID testing up and going quickly. So those are just the comments I wanted to make. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay. Right, I don't see any other question. There's a motion, substitute motion and a second to delay this a week till next Wednesday. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
No. So that motion, the substitute motion fails, so back to the original motion. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, I just want to tell you, I'm very disappointed in the county commission. Any time that we have asked, any commissioner has asked. And there have been times that I've disagreed on deferring anything, but I've always voted to defer 100% of the time because that's the right thing to do. I am totally disappointed. I guess I just can't express what this is going to do in the future. I certainly hope that none of the other ones that voted against this today ever have something that they want to defer. It's going to be a very difficult process going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I respect that. Commissioner, I, I understand your dismay. This is a COVID item that's time sensitive. This thing has been a moving ball. It's one that I think most of us are familiar with what this was. This wasn't just kind of sprung on us other than the contract itself. So that's why hearing all the sensitivity of timing and next steps and respecting what WSU's commitment was based on our encouragement or our approval a few months ago, that's why, that's why I'm supporting this. And I know it's, we'll see what the future brings. Let's hope we don't have another COVID-related item or COVID-related incident in our lifetime, but that's what it is. So there's a motion and a second to, the original motion, a second to approve the subrecipient agreement as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Okay. Commissioner Al?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a substitute motion. We would defer this for up to 48 hours. This fine time in our schedule to meet once again, give commissioners an opportunity to read the agreement and formulate any concerns or questions they might have. I'd be glad to support the base motion if this doesn't pass, but I do believe I'm willing to support a short delay. And with that, I make a substitute motion for a up to 48-hour delay on the approval of this agreement.
Okay.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to delay this up to 48 hours, Mr. Papoun and public. So when we determine that if this motion carries in up to 48 hours and all their questions, the commissioners have a chance to read it, ask a few questions, and then they say, okay, I'm ready to do the, I guess we'd be determined upon those that are wanting to read it and ask questions. The example is how much advance notice do we have to give the public that we're going to have a special meeting in up to 48 hours?
Well, the Open Meetings Act would require reasonable notice. Under these circumstances and with the discussion we've had, I think reasonable notice could be as little as an hour or unusual notice processes and just find a time in the next 48 hours.
Okay. So we could, the commissioners that have questions can read it, get their questions answered the best to their ability, because we're not in charge of Spark money and we're not in charge of other things outside of Sedgwick County in the CARES-specific decisions, which this is a CARES-specific decision. So you can get your answers, and we could call a meeting on, within an hour, depending on, and it could be, in my opinion, it could be any time of the day, even if it's seven or eight o'clock at night. So.
Certainly, the commissioners can check their calendars, work with the manager's office, and arrange for a time for this special meeting within 48 hours.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to delay this decision up to 48 hours from now, which is 10:30 Wednesday morning. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries, so we will be having an emergency, a special meeting sometime between now and 48 hours from now. So we got, a few commissioners have a lot of work to do between now and then. Okay, Matt, next item?
Well, unfortunately for you, you're not quite done with me yet. But this is just a receive and file.
But this is just a receive and file. So, this is your weekly update on COVID spending status. I would love to take a moment to say fantastic job to our finance group for getting the federal report in yesterday. It was the second report that was due. And with all things 2020 and cares, we did get some guidance on Friday afternoon at about 2:30. That changed what we needed to submit with our reporting yesterday. And they advised in that notice that, of course, their help desks were closed on Monday for the federal holiday. So, they, I just can't speak highly enough of our staff, how hard they're working and how well they're responding to all this. So, thank you for letting me give that quick plug. So, COVID spending status is up, and this is all sources, is up to $26,948,548. Now, within our non-cares areas, those expenses have not changed significantly since the last time we met. They are up $691 in the county's general fund for some mileage and supplies. Again, anytime we don't know if something is cares-eligible, but there's a time-sensitivity nature to it, we post it to the COVID Fund Center and the general fund and then seek eligibility analysis afterwards. So, on the cares side, we are up to total spending of $21,891,209. Since last week, this is up about $225,000, excuse me. Of that, $74,000 was for technology for all of the new health department staff that have come on. IT was able to assist the health department with some short-term solutions early on by reallocating some of the Technology Review Board resources, but now it's time to actually get those resources to where they were allocated. And so now this purchase is being made to shore up those new health department staff. We also have spent $65,000 on a deep, clean sanitization and sterilization of the county jail and the annex, and another $40,000 for an ocular drug scanner at Corrections. I get to talk about all kinds of new things now that I'm not used to talking about, but that is something that allows them to do some drug screening without having to get actually on the person. And so it's much safer for the client and staff. We spent another $11,000 on custodial supplies and chemicals, $7,000 for more mattresses at the jails to go with the cots and things that we've talked about, because they are expanding their daily capacity and there's not always places out of county to put inmates. And then finally, $9,000, again, something I'm not used to having to say, $9,000 for a Corrections Body Orifice Security Scanner. So it'll, helps them to avoid doing pat-downs and actually touching and being in someone with physical proximity. They can walk through the scanner and see if there's any contraband. So, then we have spent $8,463,552 in care support to schools and cities. So if you recall, you have approved now two rounds of funding. We are beginning the process of updating agreements for the round two for schools and cities. So at this point, we have allocated 100% of the original school allocation to schools. We will work on getting those agreements out. And as you approved last week, they will get 100% also of their additional funding, which totaled 1.5 million. And then for cities, they had received 50% of their original allocations. Their allocations are increasing. And just like the, the second 50% of their funding would have to be done through submitting reimbursement, that will be the process for the additional funding that they received. And so we will continue to provide updates on that. So in terms of the county's direct allocation, again, we started with $99,636,917. Based on the amounts I just shared with you, we have $77,745,708 remaining, but every one of those dollars has been allocated for a specific use. And so at this point, we still receive assurances from all of our consultants that we are on track to have this money spent by December 30th. They think we are making good progress, and so I want to provide that assurance to you because we are now down, I believe, to 76 days left of cares funding. And yes, we do have countdowns. So, spark spending then, we had 9.3 million from the state. We are at $3,380,991. The bulk of that has gone toward PPE kits, about 2.9 million. But as Brent shared earlier, since we last talked, another 67, round one, small business grants have gone out totaling $324,750. And then finally, the cares HAVA funds that went to our elections office has remained unchanged from last week at $241,584. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I recommend you receive and file and call Tanya up to the podium.
Okay. Any questions on those reports? Thank you, as always, Lindsey. Very thorough. I don't see any questions, so thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Motion to receive and file. I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. I don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, Tanya.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I'm here this morning to provide you with an update on staffing locations for some of our temporary health department staff, as well as seek your approval for a short-term office lease location. Back in late August and early September, the health department came to facilities and presented a need to locate approximately 100 temporary staff members for the timeframe between October and, through December or January of 2021. And so we began to work with our internal staff, as well as NAI Martins, who is our on-call real estate broker for suitable space with furniture and network connectivity. NAI Martins, Steve Martins, came back and presented 28 locations, some of those being office space locations, but the majority of that being hotel locations because of its ability to have furniture as well as network connectivity. The internal locations that we looked at were mostly conference rooms at Ark Valley Lodge, Ronald Reagan Historic Courthouse. We had a fire station location in there. And then the facilities that we looked at were Extension Center and In Trust Bank Arena. The difficulty we found with Extension Center and In Trust Bank Arena was that we couldn't have those consecutively because of events. And the conference room difficulty that we found is, a lot of those conference rooms had meetings in those rooms, and they really needed those meetings because of the social distance requirements that we had. But two facilities that we looked at that were very promising were the Munger facility, as well as Ark Valley Lodge, because both of those facilities have employees right now that are working remotely. So we finalized, working with the department heads for the Munger Building and Ark Valley Lodge, we were able to finalize those locations because, again, those staff were working mostly remotely. So we were able to locate 68 spaces for staff at Munger and Ark Valley Lodge. And then understand that we were able to locate 68 spaces that reduced the need for staff, the temporary health staff, to about 30. And so we worked with NAI Martins and were able to locate space at Epic Center that would be furnished with cubicles as well, as well as chairs. And so, the terms of the lease that we found at Epic Center would be 5,000 square feet, $18 a square foot, that's a full-service lease, so that includes utilities, janitorial services, and security. That's approximately $7,500 per month. That would be from November 2nd to December 30th, and that includes 30 parking spaces in the attached parking garage. Included in, in that lease is two six-month options to renew, and that would be funded with cares funding. And there is a picture there of the location Epic Center, and then, it's a little hard to see, but that's the rendering there of what those cubicles would look like, those 30 cube, cube space. So I would be happy to answer any questions, and I do recommend approval of this lease for the purpose of officing the temporary health department staff for COVID-19 planning and outreach.
Okay. Any questions? I don't see any questions. Thank you. And does this require a vote? Because we're...
It does require a vote.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion to approve. A motion and a second to approve as presented. Any other questions? Comments? I don't see any. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, I think that's the end of the cares item D. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Report of the Boards of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on October 8th, 2020.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas.
Hi, Joe.
Good to see you.
You're welcome.
The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on October 8th originally resulted in six items, but we're going to defer one of the items, so it will be five that we'll present to you for approval. Item number one is the change order, number one, and that's for point-to-point access connections and internet access for Division of Information and Technology. And this recommendation is to accept this change order and as to extend the contract for an additional three years with an increased total three-year cost of $28,117.80. Our second item is a bridge reconstruction, and this is for Public Works. This bridge structure is located on 93rd Street North between 119th and 135th Streets West. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Reese Construction Company, and that's in the amount of $488,393.50. Item number three is the rental uniform and mat program for various departments, and we're recommending to utilize the U.S. Communities Contract, RBB 19002, and that's with Centos Corporation. This will establish contract pricing through October 31st, 2023. Item number four is data communications for various departments, and this recommendation is to utilize the NASPO Value Point Contract, AR 3227, which is affiliated with the State of Kansas Contract 472-58C. And that's to recommend Converge One Incorporated, and this will be good through September 30th, 2024. Item number five is the legal services for the collection of delinquent personal property tax judgments and uncollected consumer protection judgments for legal. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Klinda Osterman LLC, and that's for a contract period of two years with three one-year options to renew. Our final item has been deferred, and that was the Kronos Telestaff Maintenance and Support. And with that said, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the five items.
Okay, there's been a presentation of the items. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve as presented from Joe. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I don't see any. Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items G through I.
Okay, here I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you. I just want to point out item Hotel, so that everybody understands what we've been doing. For the past couple of years, we've been working very closely with the city of Wichita. We've actually traveled up to Topeka to speak to the Secretary of Transportation several times about the North Junction. We also have been working with WAMPO, and we prioritize the number of transportation projects in this area, and the North Junction is the number-one transportation project with WAMPO also. Then we've been working with a coalition of leaders throughout the region with the Chamber of Commerce, and the number-one project on that list is the North Junction. Recently, we applied for a $25 million build grant from the federal government, and thanks to, to our senators and representatives in, in Washington, DC, we received 21 million of the 25 million that we requested for that. So this is a team effort. This is the folks that are working for us in Washington, DC. It's the folks that are working for us in Topeka. It's the folks that are working for us here in this region. This is a win for us today, and I am very proud that we have this next phase on our agenda today, because we're going to be able to press forward with the construction at the North Junction. What we've seen in the past couple of years now are a lot of orange barrels along 235, and that's the lead-in. It's not going to solve any of the congestion that we've seen. This next phase starts solving the congestion. What we did not want to see happen was that those orange barrels come down and then nothing improved. Unfortunately, those orange barrels are going to stay there a lot longer, but fortunately, they're going to result in a, an improvement in the congestion of the North Junction. So, I think this is a win for everyone here in Sedgwick County, whether that you work with the city, with any of our partners at the Chamber of Commerce, with WAMPO, with the state, or the federal government. And I want to thank everyone that's been involved in this project, and I'm very proud to support it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. A victory indeed. Okay. Been a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Chairman, I've talked to Mr. Ashford, and I don't believe we have any update at this time for legislative issues. I know he's going to be going around talking to Commissioners about the platform for next year, and I know Commissioner Dennis has been involved with the KAC's platform discussion, but that's, that's all we have for this week.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mike. I need to, based on just recent news, I need to ask if we can have a, an off-agenda item of consideration. So I make a motion for an off-agenda item. Apologize. Related to the Cares Act in Topeka and the Chamber of Commerce.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second to take, consider an off-agenda item. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, take the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
This is related to an email that, that we'd received yesterday and then a follow-up today. I didn't realize, again, it's time-sensitive, but the, the chamber is asking for our signature on a letter to KDHE Secretary Norman about supporting testing. And, and it included is support for WSU and the testing to help support a 10-county area. I bring this up in that I haven't had a chance to ask, but they asked our decision to, if we would join in supporting this letter, along with many others in the, in the community. But they've asked by 5 o'clock today. So, based on our previous motion about this, I don't know if we're going to be able to, I can, I can ask after the meeting if, if they'd be okay with extending the time for us to respond unless we want to, of course, I'd be supportive of signing the letter, but it has words in it that I'm not sure the whole commission would, would agree on. So, with that, I just, I'm opening for comments, and I'm open for a discussion if we want to consider supporting this letter with our region, or if we want to avoid it, or we want to, or if anybody thinks that we can have our special meeting before 5 o'clock tonight so we can respond back to the chamber and the other people on this letter, that we would be supportive or not. Any comments?
Chairman, when did we receive that letter?
Yesterday, and we just got it again today, unless...
From who? Who did it come from?
Andrew Weens at the...
I didn't get anything from Andrew.
He sent it to Tom and me. I'm sorry. I am so sorry. I just assumed we all got copied. Okay, well, I will forward it, or Tom, would you forward it, please, to all the commission? And I don't see how we can take any action because the commission hadn't, hadn't seen it. And I don't see how we can take any action, because the Commission hadn't seen it, so. With that.
Mr. Chairman, one option you could have, if you wanted to have, let the other Commissioners have an opportunity to study this, is just take a recess for 15 minutes or whatever period of time Commissioners want to at least read the email chain from Mr. Ween and see if they wanted to act. Or address it in a special meeting later today, like you said.
Okay, well, out of respect for the rest of the Commission, why don't you just get it to them, and maybe they can weigh in directly back to you if they're supportive or not? Would that be okay? And that meanwhile, I could call Mr. Weens and see if there's any flexibility in the time to support. Okay, okay, all right. So that is the end of that off-agenda item with no action taken other than instructing Tom to distribute the letter. Okay. Let's go, we have a, we have an executive session, but we also have, well, does anybody have any other? And then what's planned is we have other and then fire agenda. We'll recess to fire, and then we'll return to this meeting so we can have an executive session, if that's okay. So does anybody have anything under other? And I don't see anything, so we will recess from the regular meeting of the Board of Commission and call a meeting to order for the Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner? Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present.
Okay, Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Public agenda.
Anybody from the public want to speak regarding, we didn't receive anything either by email, so next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of August 10th, 2020.
Commissioners, this meeting, if anybody has anything other, otherwise it's just approving the minutes from, and A, B, C, and D would be, I'd like to combine those to approve the minutes of the fire meetings of August 10th, August 12th, September 2nd, and September 9th, if it's the will of the Commission. I'd make that motion.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve all the minutes listed in Item A, B, C, and D. Any questions? Comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
And being there's nothing else in the Fire District, we will adjourn from the governing body of Fire District Number One, and we'll return from recess to the County Commission meeting. And with that, next item. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 15 minutes until.
Wait, just one second. I think, I'm sorry, I didn't get to you.
I think in discussions between the manager and the chairman, they've decided that maybe 30 minutes is needed for this, Commissioner.
Right. If we can change that, I'm sorry.
Sure, sure, yeah. So I'll start over. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 11:25 for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real estate for the purpose of potentially relocating county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to a live broadcast from executive session at 11:25.
I'll second that. Make a motion and a second to go into executive session for 30 minutes. I don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, we will adjourn, or we will recess for executive session. So everybody make.
Okay, we have, we are back. We've returned from executive session and no action taken. But I'm going to make another, a motion to go back to extend executive session another 10 minutes, returning at 11:40 a.m. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, we will go back into executive session. Thank you for your patience, media. Thank you for your patience, media. Ready, Madam Clerk? Okay. Everybody's back. Okay, we have returned from executive session. No formal action to be taken. And so with that, does any of the commissioners have any other business before the commission? And I don't see any, so thank you for watching today, and we will stand adjourned.